Good morning, everyone. This the Wednesday, November 1st, 2023, regular meeting of the Nagshead Board of Commissioners. It's hereby called to order. Welcome, everybody who's in the room this morning. We have a bit of a crowd. Before we have a moment of silence, I'd like to note that Bobby Gentry, an alternate member of our Board of Adjustment, lost his wife, Susie, earlier this week. So I'd ask that you have Bobby and his family in your thoughts this morning, and we'll have a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Somebody?
I have a motion in a second. Oh, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions this morning, and we will begin with Planning Director Wyatt.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Happy to be here this morning to acknowledge Connor Twitty for his five-year anniversary with the Town of Nagshead. Connor began with Public Services as a facilities maintenance technician in October of 2018, and we pulled him away from Public Services, sorry, not sorry, in July of 2022, where he's been working as the town's environmental planter since that time. Paul, I can't speak to the details of his first couple of years with Public Services. I will say, I catch people over there in his office trying to lure him away, so I have to stay on top of that. So I imagine he was a great employee there, as he is with the Planning Department. In his role with the Planning Department, he's the go-to person for many projects and initiatives. He carries a lot of responsibility, and he does so with ease, and he takes a lot of pride in his work. Connor is responsible for the oversight and management of the town's Septic Health Initiative. Not only does he manage the administrative aspect, but he's in the field every day, actually completing the inspections, oftentimes coordinating with property owners, so he can be there, talk to them, discuss the process, and answer any questions that they have. He coordinates the Septic Health Loan Program, and he also attends various events to get the word out about the program. He manages the town's water quality sampling program, and he's the primary contact for sand relocation. He's got a lot on his plate. He stays busy, and he does a great job. I do want to note that we receive a lot of compliments on Connor, a lot of shout-outs for him. And so while recognizing him for his five years, I also want to recognize him for all the wonderful work that he does for the town and the community. Thank you.
(applause)
Good job. We'd like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do. It's a quick five years.
Next up, we'll ask Nancy Carraway to come to the podium, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to recognize Seth Gray for his five-year anniversary. Seth started in 2018 with a desire to learn all he could about water and the distribution system. In the five years he's been with the town, he's obtained his commercial driver's license, his certification in B Water Distribution, C Well, and Backflow and Cross Connection. Seth is a crew leader in the Water Distribution Division and is the operator in responsible charge for Backflow and Cross Connection for the town. Seth is always coming up with ideas and techniques to improve his skills and readily shares them with others. Seth is respectful and polite to the public and other employees. He is willing to help water customers and other divisions in Public Services in any way he can. During Seth's five years with the town, he has accomplished several milestones in his life. He became a husband in 2019, when he married his wife Molly, and a father to their son Fisher this past February. Public Services looks forward to seeing what other milestones Seth will accomplish in the next 25 years with the town. (laughter) Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have a recognition for years of service, and Town Manager Garman.
So, I realize how lucky I am to be the person that gets to honor Nancy Ruth Carraway for her 20th anniversary with the town. Not only for the many reasons that most would imagine, like hard work, dedication, consistency, and determination, but because anyone of anyone you could have fun with celebrating an anniversary, it's Nancy. This ranks up there with Perry Hale, and just slightly behind Jimmy Pierce. Seriously, though, we are here to honor and thank Nancy for 20 years of service with the town. Many of you know that Nancy has served the town for more than 20 years. Nancy started with the town in 1984 as a water plant operator. This was when I was 13. She worked for us for five years and left in 1989 to become the Dare County Reverse Osmosis Water Plant Superintendent. She worked there until she rejoined the town in 2003. I think a person's history is always interesting. Nancy graduated from Faram College in Virginia in 1980 with a degree in environmental science. I think that's right. Her first experience on the Outer Banks was with the National Park Service, working for several summers right out of college. In between, she went back to her hometown of Creve, Virginia, where she worked for the Gerson and Gerson Garment Factory. In 1983, she decided to stay in North Carolina and came on with the town in 1984. Now that Ralph is gone, she's not the longest continuously serving employee, but her history with the town goes back the farthest. Institutional knowledge is something that is very valuable, and she has plenty of this. Over the years, Nancy has continued to evolve in her knowledge and certifications, allowing her to be promoted several times and take on new responsibilities. In 2004, after being back here less than a year, she was promoted to Water Plant Superintendent. In 2012, she also became responsible for water distribution. At one point, she was the manager of both water operations and water distribution. On June 13th, 2022, I made a rare wise decision and asked her to be the next Public Services Director, and she gladly accepted, which brings us to where we are today. Many of you didn't know this, but Nancy loves to cook. During the town's 50th anniversary, the town created a cookbook, and Nancy contributed to quite heavily. I counted last night, she had 29 recipes in our cookbook.
Wow.
That's the point at which the whole world was blessed with Buddy's Onion Dip, Fred L's Beer Cheese, TJ's Shrimp Dip, Ms. Gert's Shrimp Salad, Ms. Hilda's Porcupine Balls, and Jessie's Overnight Sticky Buns. One thing is for sure, Nancy gives credit where credit is due. All those recipes have names in them. I guess those are the people that you got them from. We did an employee engagement survey the last two years and asked employees what type of recognition they prefer. We made a grave mistake, I realized. We left off food. Public Services works up an appetite, and Nancy makes sure they're well taken care of. We're so fortunate to have Nancy with us for so long. She's an asset. She's a mastermind, has a great attitude, she's very dedicated, and she loves the town. For fun, I asked the superintendents in Public Services to give me one word that does not describe Nancy. I repeat, one word that does not describe Nancy, and here's what I received. Charlie said filtered. David Perry, or, no, I think David Ryan said restrained. Ray said unmotivated. Karen said unresponsive. Steven said quiet. Eddie said unappreciative. I like this one. David Perry said retired. Clearly, she is not. She's here every day, working very hard, doing everything we need her to do, and she gets things done, and we really appreciate it. I think that sums it up. Nancy, thank you for your 25 years of service with the town.
Thank you.
As a 20-year employee, we will be taking a picture with Nancy later during one of our breaks. That brings us to a certification and chief wells. I see that the deputy chief is back.
Honorable Mayor and esteemed members of the Board of Commissioners, today is an honor to stand before you and recognize a significant achievement within our fire department. Deputy Fire Chief Shane Height has demonstrated exemplary dedication and expertise, and his contributions have not gone unnoticed. On October 3rd, 2023, the Commission on Professional Accreditation convened to bestow upon Deputy Chief Height the esteemed designation of Chief Fire Officer, or CFO. This designation is a testament to Deputy Chief Height's outstanding performance across various crucial components, including experience, education, and technical competence, among others. In joining the esteemed ranks of only 1,858 individuals worldwide who bear the CFO designation, Deputy Chief Height has demonstrated a level of excellence that we are immensely proud of. This achievement not only reflects Deputy Chief Height's personal commitment, but also the caliber of professional we in our fire department have. The CFO designation is not a static achievement, but a dynamic commitment to the continuous growth and contribution. It signifies Chief Height's dedication to maintaining the highest standards of professional conduct while furthering the impact in the field of fire and emergency services. Deputy Chief Height's achievement is a source of pride for our department and reflection on the caliber of professionals who serve our community. We extend our warmest congratulations and express our gratitude for his unwavering dedication.
Congratulations, Shane. Really appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. In recognition of that designation, we'll also be taking a picture with Deputy Chief Height during one of our breaks later in the meeting. That brings us to our presentation, our annual presentation regarding Nagshead Woods, and we'll ask Steward Aaron McCall to come up.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and Town Nagshead. I appreciate you letting me present this morning.
I'm bringing it up.
Okay. Bit of a temperature change today, huh?
Okay, it's yours.
You can just run it like a regular screen if you want.
Mm-hmm.
Can I move it? Guess I can move it. Well, see how shaky I am not. Thank you. So I'm going to present today on the 2022-23 Annual Report. You guys did receive this in a document form, so I'm just going to kind of go over things. Please feel free, as always, to ask any questions or any slide. So, as you know, about 9% of our annual operation goes for private funding raise, and part of that is both from the Town of Nagshead and Town of Kildova Hills, and we really appreciate this. We also look for, you know, we always do funding through extra grants and improved projects. We've had from Outer Banks Community Foundation, Dominion Energy, Outer Banks Visiting Center. So we thank all of you for your constant funding. So, to start with some interns, we've been working a lot with CSI. We've had fall and spring interns through CSI, working with them. They work on individual projects. And we had a young lady that was our Preserve Assistant this summer that did all kinds of wonderful things around Nagshead Woods, including working with kids and doing visitor operations and things. So just to kind of cover some projects, so one of the intern projects we had last year was just kind of improving our online mapping program and also our paper photo thing for Nagshead Woods and the hunting program and stuff like this. This is an example of the map, and she was working through it. It shows our hunting zones, it shows our trails, it shows the roads, the power line. This all helps to inform the hunters about where they can and can't be during their hunting One of the things that our Preserve Assistant did was she kind of built graphics out there. She also did like QR codes where people could come in, families, so they could get like frequently asked questions. So a lot of the questions about, is that algae on the thing, which is duckweed? What is that animal that's running around the woods and the ponds, and things like that, like nutria? We also, she also did a kind of a scavenger hunt for kids, so they could QR code it. So kids were tablets, they could look for stuff, anywhere from like, a lot of people always asking, where are the animals? Where are the things, as most of us know, animals in the middle of the day aren't around, but you can see signs of them, so we tried to incorporate that for people to kind of understand. So this is all out there on the Preserve now, and it can constantly be used by anyone that shows up whether we're there or not. She also did some interpretive things. We had the pavilion set up down there, so there was kind of hands-on touch things from plants and animals that you would find in the woods, to we also did guided, free guided hikes on Tuesdays running from July into August. One of the other things that we've been working on in the Preserve Assistant helpless, we're trying to freshen up, as the town knows, it's always important to freshen up your places where visitors come and/or staff comes. I saw that you guys just recently did the town over there and redid that. So we're looking at the pavilion and stuff like that and trying to bring in some refreshed things. One of the things would be to have an exhibit that we could roll out or have that would give a three-dimensional map of Nagshead Woods. If you've spent any time in Nagshead Woods, you know that topography is a big part of Nagshead Woods. Most people don't know that when they're on the beach, and when they show it back in the woods for the first time, they're not expecting to walk up dunes that are 60 feet high. So we really like this example. They have an example, kind of something like this over there at the Wright Brothers, where they kind of show the flight pattern, the three-dimensional thing. So we'd love to have and make a kind of a model thing like this, which, you know, with the 3D printing skills and things that are out there now, try to interpret this, that would overlay the trails, the different habitats, be a great way to show people what Nagshead Woods looks like, even if you don't walk all the way back in the woods. So this is some of the stuff we're looking at to try to improve for our visitor thing at Nagshead Woods and Pavilion. Just to kind of go over some of our numbers, so we're getting anywhere from 700 to 1,200 a month on the trails, 20 to 50 a day, and this is on each trail. It's hard to see, but each one of those color coding things is a laser counter that's armed one of our trails. As always, the Roanoke Trail gets the most visitation. It goes down to the Sound. It is our dog-friendly trail. It will continue to have that type of activity, you know, of having those extra uses, and it's a mile and a half, so it's not quite our long and most strenuous trail. Gets the most use. We also now have a laser counter on that gravel road, and so this is what, this is the type of vehicle access that we're getting on that gravel road. I think people might be amazed by that number. There's 2,800 monthly vehicles come up and down that gravel road. If you spend any time back there, that may not, but that's a lot more vehicles than used to come through that area, and so it gets a lot more use. Audio tour is still going strong. We're still getting over 1,000 calls into that audio tour. This talks about the history of Nagshead Woods. This goes off of that book. And so this is just some of the things that we're offering to the general public and things like that, where they can learn about the woods and be a part of the woods, and, you know, we're able to answer questions, no matter whether there's staff there or what things, and I think this is a really good way. We're hoping to try to do some audio tours in different locations in the future that talk maybe more about the ecology of the Preserve and things like that, so. Most recently, as always, upkeep of facilities. This past winter, we had Appalachia State in there, and they helped replace over 100 feet of wood decking or ADA trail. You know, most of our bridges now are anywhere from 20 years old to 10 years old, and wood's rotting, so we're constantly trying to upkeep and replace it, making it both safe and, you know, enjoyable from the view and everything like that. So we had a great group of kids that came in, and they helped us remove all the old woods and lay all the old planks, and we had a great time with them, and at the end of the day, we were able to replace a section that greatly needed it. We're hoping to do another 100 feet on that trail, and we've kind of got our to-do list on all of our bridges that we're constantly doing upkeeps and things like that. Silly trail, so you have to work in updating our signs as well. I'll have some really great images next year, possibly new active signs of redoing all of our signage, entrance to the Nagshead Woods and things like that. We've got a great graphic designer slash guy that's incorporating some art and things within our wood signs, so we'll kind of bring things together, and much needed, and hope to have those things active by the spring of this coming year. Partnership, volunteer, community outreach, things like that. We've got Chip Walton, who's pictured there. He's been volunteering since he retired from being a pilot. It's been a great help. Helps to do trail stuff, is in there twice a week, so that's really helped to alleviate some of the stress from me getting to all the places, and he puts in a lot of time. Worked with the aquarium. We did the two-sea-to-sound trips down there. That's using the town trail. That basically goes from the Bonnet Street Park, and they go across, they look, they talk about the ecology of the ocean, all the way to the Sound. And so we helped to actually fund the fifth grade class both at Nagshead and KDH. Rhonda Paris led those tours with volunteers, and we had one of our volunteers as well helping that. We had OBX Women in the Ventures Club back in the woods, so we're constantly trying to make sure that groups can use the woods, and that we're reaching out to people within the community of the staff and the availability we have. As always, management, invasive species forever, always in there, but we're trying to keep them cut back and things like this. These are the main ones that we're dealing with. There's a lepidocetus, there's a particular type of pea-type of thing that's now growing in that. Unfortunately, some of the stuff comes in with the roadway, most of it comes in with our roadways, and/or aerial drops by birds and things like that. But for the most part, we've kept our invasives at bay near roadsides and things like that, but these are the ones that we're always keeping an eye on and check, and hoping to reduce their growth within the maritime forest. Biology, you know, this comes back to our hunting program. We've had 34 participants in our hunters, 300 hours, and eight deer were harvested in last year's hunting season. And this is a little video. That's a bobcat. Hopefully, this will run, but I think this is really cool. It's really neat to show you that having an intact maritime forest of 1,000 acres or more allows you to have these type of big predators in here that are doing quite well, so.
Awesome.
There they are paired.
Wow. That's good.
There's a female, and there's your little kid this year. So, really cool. They're doing quite well. I think that's awesome. To me, that's a really great find. We won't, we barely ever capture that. Besides video, I've had one resident actually spot them running across the gravel road this year, so a set of eyes on it, but this is really neat. This goes to show that our conservation efforts back there, the fact that the towns, the nature conservancy, the community have protected over 1,000 acres, allows us to have these great type of animals running around the Outer Banks, which I think is an awesome thing. It's a great experience. So, I think that's it for me. Yep, appreciate y'all's time. As always, I appreciate y'all's commitment to the woods and to the nature conservancy. Any questions, happy to answer them. Always come back and visit.
There may be some question comments. I want to really applaud what appears to be a greater outreach, you know, with your signage, using your interns, using the staff you're able to get to sort of expand the information that's available about the woods. I think that's pretty great. The Ocean to Sound Trail that goes along Bonnet Street, might be interesting someday to have interpretive elements like those in the woods all the way to the, all the way to the ocean.
We've got a draft already. It's on our list of being an audio tour.
Awesome.
We're working with Rhonda Paris with the aquarium, who's kind of, we've kind of drafted out one, so we kind of had stationary stops and things like that. So we've tried to debate whether we do kind of a signage with pictures and things you can read, or the audio tour. The audio tour, the big thing about the audio tour is once you get it developed and stuff like that, it's $2,000 a year to run that, keep that audio tour up and running clean through the companies and stuff like that. It's called Cellular One, and we need to make sure that it works well across that thing, so if you're going to invest in it, that you can actually get the calls through. It seems like it does from what we've tested, but it's kind of, that's kind of where we're at with that, but we actually do have a draft.
Okay, very good.
And so once we draft it out and think about which way, and it could be something I'd be happy to talk with the town about, how you best want to go about it and what you would like to have, because we have examples, and the cellular ones are quite a bit smaller. They're only like 12 by 12, where the signs we would do interpretive would be more like, you know, 18 by 24.
Right.
It's, they're both good to have. It's just a matter of which one we decide we would want to have, you know, that we felt like we would get the most bang for our buck, I guess.
Great. Well, that's exciting. I'll start. Commissioner Sears.
Great job, Aaron. Appreciate all you do and your staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Aaron, I really like all the interpretive elements that you're adding to enhance the customer experience. I think that's encouraging people to come back to the woods and talk about the woods, which is really important.
Yep, appreciate, yeah, it's always something we need to update and keep going and make it relevant to how people are viewing, how people use technology today.
Thank you. Thank you for a great job and great presentation.
Yeah, thanks for all you do back there, man. We really appreciate it. I've been back there quite a few times and seen the improvements, and you guys are just doing a great job, so thanks a lot.
If there's ever any questions, you know how to reach me.
How can the public stay in touch with what's going on back there on a regular basis? Is it your website, or do you have social media channels?
We have a Facebook page. We kind of do some stuff, update when we can. You know, it's really, it's really a two-person staff back there, so we're managing it the best we can amongst other things that we do. But we do have a Facebook. We do keep all of our new trail stuff, also our nature.org/nhw, so that stuff is, you can get stuff through the TNC site that we've got, like our trail maps, our species lists. Those are all in PDF files that people can get, download, you know, things as well. So we kind of try to put it on every different form that we can think of. I don't think we do an Instagram, but some of that's just because I don't do a lot of that social media stuff.
Very good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year, and our department heads are going to present the departmental employees of the year first, and then the board will recess to choose an overall employee of the year. So I guess will we start with you, Andy? Are you going to?
On your mayor's agenda, I think we have an order there of the departments since they're going to come up.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Number one is...
So we'll begin with Administrative Services.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This year, Admin Services and the Town Manager's Office was combined, and our departmental employee of the year is Roberta Thumann. Roberta is our Public Information Officer, or PIO, as I will probably say throughout this presentation. And the job of the PIO is to provide management for the town's communications and information related to our functions, as well as matters of general interest, both internally and externally. And she holds a responsibility for curating and protecting our image. Hard work is a privilege, and I think opportunities are as well as challenges. And part of the employee of the year, I think, is really going above and beyond, not to be cliched, but in protecting and promoting the Nagshead legacy and character, recently our history was honored through the Ash Wednesday documentary. This highlights the resiliency of Nagshead and the character of the people that formed the backbone of our community. This was a 30-minute video that was presented to a standing-room-only audience at Jeanette's Pier, and I remember when Roberta was working on the video... Pier, and I remember when Roberta was working on the video, she was worried that nobody was going to show up. And she was making sure everybody in the town, from the town was going to show up. Well, people from the town did show up, but they had to turn around because there wasn't enough space for them. I personally watched on YouTube along with, I think the count's up to about 6,000 other people right now. And this was really a nostalgic event that was, brought our community together to let us reminisce and remind us of our past. This video respectfully paid homage to the grit of our town. In the end, Roberta was really responsible for coordinating this effort. It was sparked by her idea, it was an incredibly thoughtful project, she followed through on it. Again, it was her idea, this was in addition to her every other job, every other day-to-day task that she does. It was a special event, she requested this, it was her idea, and it was completely her own initiative. So we thank you for that. I did write something in the memo, I said, remembering our legacy means recognizing what the town has become and honoring our past allows us to build for the future. As far as impacts that she's made to the community and our organization, Roberta as PIO, she ultimately oversees our website. And this year, we might recall that it was launched, it was refreshed, and we did have some refreshed branding as well. Our website is fundamental to ensure information is relevant, timely and available all in one location. This encompasses content information and the accessibility of the information, how easy it is to navigate our website, the visual design of the website, again, branding, interaction and intuitiveness. It's a place where our residents and visitors feel connected to the town and it's also helpful, Roberta uses our website to gather metrics, to keep us on the pulse of information that what our community is really wanting and interested in, and it's always dynamic. So we always have to keep up with that. And of course, Roberta does video the Board of Commissioners meetings, but she also does videos on our YouTube channel for the GovEd and the, you know, you should check it out. It ranges from shipwrecks, beach driving, special events, all history of Nags Head, all about Nags Head on the GovEd channel, so we appreciate for that. We recently have created some internal town values for our team members and this really provides, dictates how we show up every day for work, how we treat our team members and how we interact with each other and the public, how we hold each other accountable for our actions. And as PIO, I think one of our, our core values is our people are in the know. Open communication builds and maintains a symbiotic relationship between the town and our community through appropriate, consistent, complete and accurate information sharing. And this really does foster a sense of community. So a couple of examples of, of how she showed up through our town values, we, you all might recall that we did a, a townwide newsletter that was mailed out. We got a lot of kudos from the public about this newsletter and Roberta, you know, really designed that, put that together. She, with the help of, you know, of course, everybody else, it wasn't just one person, but it was really showcased everything that we should be proud of as a town and some of our initiatives that we do, we do. And again, it kept everybody informed and in the know. And I know later on today, we'll be talking about the community survey, Roberta really helped us put that together. That was also a really big initiative that took several months in the making. She helped us develop questions, but I think equally important is how you ask the questions, so she was really helpful with that. And then a, a third example was the welcome packet that we recently created. That was, I will say several years in the making because it kind of got backburnered, but it really, we, we got a compliment, a lot of compliments on that too, because even though it's sent out to new homeowners, we, we sent it out to some, some people to test it out before that and they were seasoned residents and they didn't even know some of the things that were in the, the welcome packet. So I think it's great information whether you live here or not. In summary, the effectiveness and efficiency of our town is strengthened through communication and Roberta's at the heart of that, so we thank you for considering Roberta Thumann as the 2023 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year. Thank you.
Kelly? Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. I'm very excited to be here to introduce the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year nominee for the Planning Department, which is Paige Griffin. Unfortunately, Paige couldn't be here with us this morning, however, I'm confident if she was, she would be downplaying everything I'm going to say about her. Maybe that's best. Her son recently got a job in Europe, so she's driving him up to New York City to send him on his way, so. Paige began working with the town part-time in May of 2018 as the event coordinator and then she came on full-time in July of 2022. I think most people associate Paige with the Doughty Park Farmers Market and the holiday markets through the winter months, but her involvement and contributions to the town go well beyond the park. Paige has the unique ability to envision and then create spaces and events that draw people together, promote a sense of community and encourage both mental and physical well-being. The great thing about Paige is that she can create those spaces physically. You see them with the Doughty Park Farmers Markets, our yoga on Tuesday, Fitness Fridays, and with our employee wellness days. But she also has the ability to create those types of spaces just when you're kind of in her presence, just when you're around her in her office, just working in her sphere, really. She's kind, she's compassionate, she genuinely cares about the town, citizens in the town as well as coworkers that work for the town. She creates welcoming, safe spaces for all employees, she listens, she ensures everyone's input is heard, she treats everyone fairly and she's the biggest advocate for mental, physical and emotional wellness among your staff, which means a lot to us and she genuinely wants to see everyone thrive. Her role as event coordinator, it goes beyond the 8:30 to 5 workday. The success of our town events lies heavily in her drive to get to know each vendor that she works with, the vendors, each band, each fitness instructor, each nonprofit. She commits whatever time is needed to sit with them, talk with them, get to know them. She puts many hours in outside of work, creating connections, speaking with their vendors, learning about their products, their sales approach, their strengths, their weaknesses and promoting their products and their personalities. And with all of that information, she sets to the difficult task of creating the Doughty Park map, whether it's the holiday markets or the summer markets. I don't think people really have an idea of what goes into that. She carefully locates each vendor on the field, mindful to keep their personalities, similar personalities clustered together, that creating strength and synergy among all the neighboring vendors and not saturating one area with the same product. You can see and hear examples of this throughout the community and certainly at our markets if you just walk around and talk with people. Paige collaborates with local businesses and organizations throughout the year on various events. One example is how she works with the Town of Duck in the Dare County Arts Council when she's putting together our summer concert series. Doing so, she makes sure that we have quality music from all genres, she skillfully manages the budget associated with this, she negotiates contracts with each of the bands, she manages the logistics associated with the concert and most notable. Paige also has the ability to envision any risk or any issue that may occur at any time and come up with a Plan B, a Plan C and a Plan D, just to make sure that everything's covered. There are many attributes that make Paige a special employee here at Town Hall. She routinely goes above and beyond what's expected of her, she maintains a positive, consistent and calm attitude throughout some high pressure and ever-changing circumstances. She treats everyone inside and outside of the organization with kindness, respect, and she's always willing to help others. These are just a few of the reasons that the Planning Department would like to nominate Paige Griffin as the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year. And I'm sorry she's not here, but I'm sure she'll see this later.
Let's give Paige a round of applause. Nancy, I think we have you next.
Good morning. Public Services nominee for Employee of the Year is Seth Gray. Seth began his career in water distribution five years ago and after the first week, he was the distribution racegoemakers' right-hand man. Seth is always looking to find ways to make water distribution responsibilities and record-keeping easy to access and efficient. Seth took it upon himself to create spreadsheets for water tap installations, meter changeouts and water leaks. He took the lead in the annual distribution system flushing. While flushing, Seth keeps a record of equipment that needs attention, valves, blow-offs and hydrants. When the system flushing has been completed, he makes sure the equipment is repaired or replaced and ready for the next year. Seth is the first one in the whole when it comes to repairing service lines and water mains. He shares his knowledge readily with other employees. Seth makes it his mission to make sure new distribution technicians are taught the safe and correct way to make repairs and perform tasks. The comments often heard about Seth are, he is a hard worker who doesn't mind putting in the extra effort to do the job right the first time. He always has a good and helpful attitude, even when called out in the middle of the night. Seth never hesitates to help other divisions when needed and Seth is always courteous to customers and other employees. Seth's desire to do the job right the first time, his positive and respectful attitude in all he does for the town and his willingness to help others are a few of the reasons he was nominated for Employee of the Year from Public Services by his peers.
That brings us Chief Hale.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to announce the Nags Head Police Department's 2023 Employee of the Year is Stephen Anderson. Stephen was promoted to rank a lieutenant this year in January and immediately made a positive impact in his new role. Lieutenant Anderson's duties include overseeing the daily operations of the Patrol Division, duty scheduling and exterior training coordination for the department. In addition, Stephen is a member of the County Emergency Response Team, a certified general and firearms instructor who teaches in-house and regularly instructs new officers at the local basic law enforcement training program. Lieutenant Anderson has been instrumental in assisting with our transition into the new computer-aided dispatch system that was implemented this year. He attended multiple trainings as well as self-teaching and then educated our staff on proper utilization of the new system. Stephen is a true team player and he takes his role as lieutenant seriously. He leads the way of we do what's right for the right reasons. There have been numerous times when Stephen has taken the initiative to handle matters without having to be asked by his superiors. He sees an issue and knows how it is expected to be handled. His attitude and love for our department is shown in his daily actions and the way he carries his duties out make him shine. Stephen received several nominations from those who he supervises and many of the comments are very telling of why he is deserving of this nomination. A few of these are, each task that he is assigned is completed without fail. Stephen goes above and beyond as a patrol lieutenant. He has also become a great leader for the younger officers. Stephen has worked hard and beyond reproach dealing with everything from the new CAD system to all other tasks he has been delegated. He is the type of person that puts the interest of others before his. It is for these reasons Lieutenant Stephen Anderson has been selected as the Nags Head Police Department's 2023 Employee of the Year and is being recommended for the 2023 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year for the Town of Nags Head. Congratulations, Stephen. Thank you for all of this.
That brings us to the Fire Department and Chief Wells.
Good morning again. It is my honor to present Fire Captain James Mosman as the Fire Department's nominee for the 2023 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year. Captain Mosman has demonstrated unwavering dedication and loyalty since joining us in 2004. He embodies the values of both the Town of Nags Head and the Fire Department on a daily basis, showcasing exceptional customer service in all situations. He is meticulous in detail and is evidence in the project he undertakes. If it comes to something incredibly task-oriented, complicated or downright difficult, James is the person we go to. He exemplifies, does this in our communication systems, hydrant flow testing, or it's his role as a Level 3 inspector. This allows him to perform inspections in critical areas such as elementary school and peak nursing home. James' commitment to maintaining our fire apparatus and stations is invaluable, often saving us from costly vendor repairs. He is a true team player, readily offers his assistance on projects both within our department and within the town. For several years, James has led the initiative to sell T-shirts in October for breast cancer awareness, resulting in over $10,000 in contributions to the Outer Banks Relief Fund. In his role supervisor, James is considerate and a thoughtful leader, always seeking opportunities to empower his team and encourage their professional growth and training. He consistently goes above and beyond every offering, every time that you look at some of his employees, you see James' fingerprints just on them. He guides them, leads them, mentors them and coaches them. James sets a high standard throughout his exemplary leadership and continues pursuit of, of excellence. Thank you for considering James Mosman as the Earl Murray Jr. 2023 Employee of the Year, James.
I'd like to ask if we could have one more round of applause for all these excellent, excellent. We're truly blessed to have some wonderful people working for the Town of Nags Head. At this time, a motion to move into closed session for consideration of the Employee of the Year would be in order.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. Thank you. The board has returned to open session. Before we announce the Employee of the Year, this is the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award and I'd like for former police chief Kevin Brinkley to speak briefly to who Earl Murray was.
You know, the board took it upon to honor Earl by naming our Employee of the Year award that's given annually after Sergeant Earl Murray. Earl was killed in the line of duty, May 15th, 2009, while responding to a Berkeley in progress call. The roads were wet, he lost control of his vehicle and was killed after striking a utility pole, but I don't want to lose sight of what this award is and Earl would not want any of this, he would probably say dag gummit. You know, don't do this, but let's. It has been a while since we have had an Employee of the Year from this department, and I am pleased to announce that Stephen Anderson of the NAGCET Police Department is our Employee of the Year. Stephen, congratulations. A very small token of very appreciation. The board is going to come around for a photograph, first with their Town Employee of the Year, and then we'll have all of the nominees up for Seth. The board will come around.
Thank you. Very well deserved.
Thank you. And if we can have the other Departmental--
The Republicans want to have the bits of water.
I'll have it myself.
Perfect.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The board will take a brief recess so that we can--any folks who need to leave may do so, and the board can take a short break. So we'll just take five minutes here. All right. The board has returned, and the next item on our agenda is public comment. And Mr. Hobbs?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This time we'll open the time for a public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to address the board, if you'll come forward and state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, then we'll close the time for public comment.
Very good. Thank you. Now that brings us to our consent agenda, which you have before you with six items, and a motion would be in order.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and Planning Director and Director Wyatt.
Thank you. I don't have too much to report on this morning, but if there's anything that you want me to go into more detail with, I'm happy to. The Planning Board met on October 17. We had a pretty full agenda. What you have just adopted for your consent agenda was predominantly what we spoke about: subdivision waiver, text amendment for drive-through restaurants, text amendment related to jewelry shops and accessory uses, and continuing the conversation on multifamily dwellings. The Septic Health Advisory Committee, they met on October 24. It was a productive meeting. There was a lot of discussion on some recent session laws that might be affecting Dare County as it pertains to some repair areas and some triggers that might send people to have to go to pre-treatment systems versus conventional systems. We can talk more about that later on if you would like for me to, but at this point, I have spoken with Josh Coltrane with the Dare County Health Department, and he has a pretty good understanding of what these new laws would mean, how they would affect Dare County, and so he's agreed to meet with any and everybody that would like to attend and discuss what those rules would look like. In addition to that, the committee discussed concerns with over occupancy and how do we address that, especially for rental homes. So we talked about perhaps setting up a meeting with some real estate companies and Outer Banks Association of Realtors to discuss what that looks like, as well as considering a text amendment to discourage people from parking on their septic system and drain field. So those are things that you'll see coming forward. Our EV action plan, we have had some motion with that. We identified the two spaces that we're going to look to put these Level II chargers. Daniel Parsons with Low Wire Technologies is really familiar with a system called Evo Charge. We had been looking at ChargePoint. He's enlightened us on Evo Charge, so we're trying to make sure which one of those companies are going to best meet the needs of the grant program. But they both seem to be great pieces of equipment, so I don't think we'll be wrong whichever way we go there. We hosted a sand relocation meeting on October 11. It was in here. It was from 6:00 to 7:00. It was a great crowd, probably had 15-plus equipment operators as well as 15-plus interested homeowners. A lot of good conversation went with that, and Air Environmental Planner Connor Twitty and Town Engineer David Ryan led that meeting, so it was a very good meeting. And we have our holiday markets coming up here soon. First one's going to be November 11 from 9:00 to noon, and then November 25, also from 9:00 to noon, with the tree lighting that evening from 5:00 to 7:00. So I hope everybody will come visit.
Very good. Any questions for Kelly or comments? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say that I'm excited about how you and the Planning Department are moving forward in the multifamily, and I like the direction it's taking. So thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to new business and committee reports, and so I'll start. Commissioner Sanders, anything?
Nothing new. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley?
We had the--she gave the update on the septic committee.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner--
No, thank you.
Commissioner Sears?
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. I do thank you, Commissioner Sears, for reporting to us on the grant awards from the Ministers Bureau. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item G2 is a reappointment or reappointment to the Personnel Grievance Panel. There is one vacancy, and there is--we have a nominee who is interested in being reappointed.
Motion to reappoint Jeanne Kramer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Kramer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to items from the Town Attorney. Mr. Hobbs, do you have anything for us today?
Mayor, I have no report today except to just say thank you for allowing me to fill in today for John Leidy.
All right. Very good. We wish Mr. Leidy a quick recovery.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Thank you. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the Town Manager, and we'll ask David to come up for an update on the Public Services facility.
Good morning, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I've got a quick update for you for the Public Services Project. Excuse me one second. So we've got a similar format that we have presented in previous months with the overall layout of the Public Services Project. On the right-hand side of the page, that's where we have our Administration Building in the area of our current brushyard operation. And then as we proceed to the left-hand side of the page, we've got our Fleet Facilities and Sanitation Building here where the cursor is. We have our Equipment Building here in the back and the Water Distribution Building. We do have one more building that we have not started construction on, and that's the Vehicle Storage Building, which is right here in the center of the page. So to document progress over the past month, this is where we were last month with our Administration Building, which is on the east side of South Lark Avenue. We had the roof construction, the internal and exterior framing, along with this dense glass insulation, and this is where we are this month. They have--what we're seeing here in green is a waterproof membrane, otherwise known as a liquid air barrier, that provides waterproofing for the exterior of the structure prior to any block or siding going in place. We've got a couple of different angles. We started with the--from the front of the building. This is towards the southeast corner of the building, and here towards the northeast corner of the building. As you can see, this is what is representative of being dried in, minus the windows and doors being in place. They do have a protective covering over the windows so they can perform some interior work. What we've got up here is a picture from the new conference room. You can see the interior framing is in place. We've got some insulation and some rough-in work. The electrical is about 95% complete for the rough-in, and then we have plumbing and HVAC, which are right around 40% right now. So over the course of the next month, they'll be focusing on completing that rough-in work. Moving on, over to our combined Fleet Facilities and Sanitation Building. This is a picture that was presented last month. This is taken from the western side of the site, looking back eastward. You can see in the foreground, this is the footings for the fleet side of the building, and then the area that is covered, that is the common area, which then extends into the fleet area portion of the building. And here's another view back towards a water tower, looking from west to east at the overall building from last month, and this is the progress that we have this month. This is taken on from the eastern portion of the site, from South Lark Avenue, looking back towards the west. As you can see, they've got the CMU block in place, and that is also in place on the rear of the building, which is the south side. And then you can see, this is the common area. This is the--all the slab rough-in has taken place, the welded wire fabric in place, and I believe that pour is going to take place this week. So moving along with that, and then we also have the exterior framing up for the facility side of the building, along with the rear wall progress right now, where they're about 75% complete with that wall installation. On the Equipment Building, it's been a couple of months since we showed this. They had gone ahead and performed some preliminary grading for the foundation, and this is where we stand today. The metal framing is currently in progress, and the exterior block wall is going up around that framing. So we've seen some significant progress on that building just over the past several weeks. And then lastly, we have our Water Distribution Building. This is where we were last month with the exterior walls in place, and this month, again, we've got the liquid air barrier in place, and we also have the block wall along the northern face in place. They are currently working on the interior of the building. What we're looking at right here is looking back towards where the common area is and where the mezzanine is located. That mezzanine was poured within the past week or so, so that's in place, and again, they're working towards going ahead and putting in that liquid air barrier around the building, and the front still has some finishing to be done there prior to any additional brickwork. So that is just a summary of some of the progress that has taken place over the past month. What we are going to see in the next 30 to 45 days is they will transition with the site work over here to the right-hand side of the page and start working in that area where we currently have our brushyard operation, which is on the north side of the site over here. And so we currently have our brushyard operation plus a temporary fuel setup, so that will have to be taken out of service whenever they go ahead and mobilize over in that area. We'll continue to see rough-in work be completed for the Administration Building, as well as the Fleet Facilities and Sanitation Building, and some finishing work over there at our Water Distribution Building. So as it stands right now, the schedule has been maintained. We've been lucky with the good weather window that we've had here recently. There is much activity that is occurring on that site. Aside from the construction, Public Services have been able to go ahead and maintain their operation unimpeded, and so it's--everything is progressing along rather nicely. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Nice to see the progress.
Yes, it is.
It's come along really well.
What's the anticipated completion date, David?
So it's going to be staggered. So we're looking at occupying buildings at various intervals. As it stands right now, the Equipment Building is probably going to be one of the first buildings that is completed. That's the smallest one. Then shortly thereafter, we're looking at the Water Distribution and the Admin-- This is taken on from the eastern portion of the site, from South Lark Avenue, looking back towards the west. As you can see, they've got the CMU block in place. And that is also in place on the rear of the building, which is the south side. And then you can see, this is the common area. This is the, all the slab rough-in has taken place, the welded wire fabric in place. And I believe that pour is going to take place this week. So moving along with that, and then we also have the exterior framing up for the facility side of the building, along with the rear wall progress right now, where they're about 75% complete with that wall installation. On the equipment building, it's been a couple of months since we showed this. They had gone ahead and performed some preliminary grading for the foundation. And this is where we stand today. The metal framing is currently in progress and the exterior block wall is going up around that framing. So we've seen some significant progress on that building just over the past several weeks. And then lastly, we have our water distribution building. This is where we were last month with the exterior walls in place. And this month, again, we've got the liquid air barrier in place. And we also have the block wall along the northern face in place. They are currently working on the interior of the building. What we're looking at right here is looking back towards where the common area is and where the mezzanine is located. That mezzanine was poured within the past week or so, so that's in place. And again, they're working towards going ahead and putting in that liquid air barrier around the building. And the front still has some finishing to be done there prior to any additional brickwork. So that is just a summary of some of the progress that has taken place over the past month. What we are going to see in the next 30 to 45 days is they will transition with the site work over here to the right-hand side of the page and start working in that area where we currently have our brushyard operation, which is on the north side of the site over here. And so we currently have our brushyard operation plus a temporary fuel setup. So that will have to be taken out of service whenever they go ahead and mobilize over in that area. We'll continue to see rough-in work be completed for the administration building, as well as the fleet facilities and sanitation building and some finishing work over there at our water distribution building. So as it stands right now, the schedule has been maintained. We've been lucky with the good weather window that we've had here recently. There is much activity that is occurring on that site. Aside from the construction, public services have been able to go ahead and maintain their operation unimpeded. And so it's, everything is progressing along rather nicely. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Nice to see the progress.
Yes, it is.
It's come along really well.
What's the anticipated completion date, David?
So it's going to be staggered. So we're looking at occupying buildings at various intervals. As it stands right now, the equipment building is probably going to be one of the first buildings that is completed. That's the smallest one. Then shortly thereafter, we're looking at the water distribution and the admin building being completed around the same timeframe. We're looking at probably February or March of 2024 for those two buildings. And then for the fleet facilities and sanitation building, looking in the May timeframe for occupation of that building. One thing I wanted to mention is we have not started on the vehicle storage building. We're looking at around the first of the year to begin construction on that. And the overall project timeframe to be complete, I think, is October 2024.
Thank you.
So there are a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, there are. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
David, one last thing. When would the demo occur on the existing building?
So the demo would occur after the fleet facilities and sanitation building is occupied. So it would be around that May timeframe of 2024 when the, that new building is occupied, that shortly thereafter, the demo would take place on the existing building.
So in May, the staff will have transitioned to all the new buildings. And so at that point, we'll have the garage they're working on and then some of the side improvements. The new fueling system and the car wash areas are really, and the parking areas are really what would remain to be built out. But in terms of operations, the staff will be transitioning to the new facilities in around the May timeframe.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to town manager Garmin and an update on the community survey.
All right. Thank you. So this month, you know, we had update on the community survey listed on the agenda. This is actually a presentation of the survey results, now that it's concluded. As the board is aware, we are doing a, we did a survey this past year. The town has not done this in a long time. The last comprehensive survey that we did was in 2005 with Mayor Renee Cahoon as the signatory on the survey that went out. And I was involved with that. That was being done as part of a land use plan update. And so, you know, we realized over the last few strategic planning sessions that the board has completed, that it would be good to have this information as a reference to go. And when we look at policy initiatives, program and budgeted initiatives, that we really have something that we can rely on for guidance from the whole community. Obviously, the board is very involved with the community and talks to a lot of people and hears a lot of feedback. But something that you can objectively look at to evaluate where the community is on issues and how we want to align with the community on the things we're doing is invaluable. And that was the goal of the survey. So we hired a company to help us with this and design the questionnaire. It was a pretty extensive questionnaire, I believe it was probably close to 60 questions. A lot of the questions were similar to what we asked in 2005, just to try to gauge where we are relative to, you know, 18 years ago. We also asked quite a few questions on how well we're doing with regard to our services. So we started this past summer in July. We sent out several different pieces of information to the community to prep them that it was coming. We sent a postcard and then we sent the actual survey and we sent a reminder postcard after they got the survey. And they had until September to complete the survey. We sent out a random sample to 3,000 residents and property owners. We have about 5,500, so it's a little more than half. We also did a separate survey online for those that were not included in the random sample. We wanted those folks to have an opportunity to participate as well. We did not receive nearly as much participation for that as we did for the random sample, which was the mailed survey, which goes to show that there's nothing to be said for old school, you know, data collection. And so, and that's one of the things we learned in the surveys, that, you know, people still rely on traditional sources of communication. And that's something to keep in mind. So in total, we received about 1,136 completed surveys. That includes the random sample and the online survey. About 1,074 of those responses were from the random sample. So that goes to show you that only a small fraction of the responses were from the online survey. So the total response rate was about 36%. I feel like that's a great response rate. Talking with our consultant, who does this a lot, they feel like anything over 20% is acceptable, a good response rate. And we received a 36% response rate. I think that's sort of a reflection of our community and how much people are vested in what we're doing here in Nags Head. So just a stated goal up here, you know, we want to provide property owners and residents with the opportunity to rate the quality of life in the town, as well as the quality of service delivery and the performance of our government. We also wanted feedback on what's working, what's not, as well as citizen views on priorities and projects and issues facing the town. So as I said, we're going to use this hopefully as a resource to refer back to continually on future policy program and budgetary initiatives. We're also going to use this as part of our strategic planning efforts moving forward. The topics in the survey, you can see on the screen, you know, we asked questions about the overall direction of the town, government performance, preservation of Nags Head, including the character of Nags Head. What are our major problems and priorities? Recreation and quality of life initiatives, obviously department performance, water management, including stormwater, water quality in beaches, traffic and transportation, housing, regulating development, shoreline management, and obviously demographic information. This is sort of the format of the survey. You can see that most of the questions were asked somewhat sort of on a Likert scale. So, you know, usually folks had a number of ways to respond to each question. And obviously, they could respond that they don't know or don't have enough information to respond. And so that is all included in here as well. The report was published as part of your packet. We also have a separate page on our website dedicated to the survey, which we'll go ahead and post the report to that as well. And we'll post this presentation there as well here in the next few days. The report outlined on the screen, so it starts off with an executive summary and then how the survey was administered. There's a summary of the survey findings, but a lot of the hard data is in the appendices. Appendix A includes the demographic information characteristics of the respondents. Appendix B is where you'll see the complete set of survey responses. Appendix C is the verbatim responses. So the last question in the survey asked what folks think the single most important thing that Nags Head is facing is. And we have written responses, every single one of those is included. It's about 20-plus pages of responses from people on what they think the most important thing Nags Head is facing. Appendix D is the survey results by respondent characteristic. So they cross-tagulate the responses based on the demographic information. For instance, geography, we asked respondents where in the town their property is located. And so you can cross-tagulate how they responded to certain questions based on where they lived. And that information may be important as we evaluate specific subjects like beach nourishment. We have the open participation survey responses and then the methodology and survey materials that were sent out. This is just a summary of the characteristics we asked about in the survey. On the right there, it shows you the page numbers for where you would find these in the report. And this is just a summary of geographic areas we asked people to respond from. So people had to indicate whether they lived between the highways, east of the beach road, west of the bypass, and south Nags Head, and also on the causeway. And so we can, we can find out how everybody answered each question based on where they live. So in the beginning of the report, in the survey findings, you have some graphs which explain, you know, how people responded to each question. And here's an example of that on the screen. This is the first question in the whole survey, which asks about Nags Head government performance. I want to go ahead and explain, in appendix A, you also have the same question, but it includes the entire detail. In the survey findings, it talks about how people responded in terms of whether they thought it was excellent or good in terms of performance. And this, in the appendices, is where it tells you the entire set of responses. So over here, you can see that, you know, there's, the poor and fair responses are also evaluated here. And then for people that didn't have an opinion, it tells you that here. And so then this has the same question broken down excluding the no opinions. So you can look at it both ways. So I just want to point that out as a helpful tool to evaluate how people responded. Let's see, let's just go back real quick. So then back to this. So this just shows you how people responded to the government performance question. The first response was the quality of services provided by Nags Head. And 90% of the respondents said that the services provided by the town were excellent or good. And then the remaining 10% would have been fair or poor or didn't know. So obviously, I think, when we talked to our consultant, who does this a lot in a lot of different communities across the country, they felt like this, this response was very favorable to what we're doing here in the town. And you can see that the following responses flowing down from there. It asked about ease of accessing services, the overall direction the town is moving, communicating events, issues and programs, and then providing opportunities for community engagement and involvement. So obviously, there's work to do in each one of these categories. We're not perfect, but I think overall, the responses are favorable. This question on figure seven, it's on page 12 of the report. We asked this question, similar question years ago in 2005 when we did the survey. The first piece of the question, which, this is how it appeared in the survey. It asked you to indicate how important you think each of these items are to the success of the town. And then on the right side, it asked you to rate how well we're doing in each one of these categories. So on the screen here, it shows it broken down. The darker blue line indicates how important they thought the item was. And then the lighter blue indicates how well they thought we were doing. And so when the lines converge together, that means that they thought it was important and we're doing pretty well. Some of the responses, you know, how well we're doing doesn't align as well with how important they thought it was. And so some themes start to emerge there. And those are obviously the things that we want to look at a little bit closer. The report also had another graphic that sort of broke this down in terms of quadrants, like how important it was versus how well we're doing. And so the items up in the upper left-hand corner are the ones that we're not doing as well according to the community that are also very important. And some of those things were regulating development and controlling density, managing stormwater and preserving Nags Head character. So I think that the community would say we need to spend a little bit more time and effort on those things. Obviously, we've been doing a lot in some of these areas and it's hard to determine from the survey where, how people are responding. In some cases, people's responses might be based on a specific occurrence. Some people's memories are older when it comes to these things. Hurricane Matthew was a pretty significant event that affected the town from a flooding and stormwater perspective. So, you know, we've done a lot of work on stormwater in the last few years, but, you know, it's hard to determine where, where people's minds are when they're answering the questions. But it does highlight the importance of the issue and that sort of directs the board to continue to focus on these things. Figure 10 talked about priorities for the next two years. Some of these things that are very high priorities align well with the things we've been working on. I think the town for quite some time has been working on shoreline management efforts and continues to evolve in that area. Water quality was very high priority, drainage, preserving open space and protecting natural resources, traffic safety, wastewater infrastructure, and then keeping the tax rate low was slightly below that. So all the, all the areas are very high priorities, but you can see that the things that we've really focused on are the things that are really towards the top. So this question, this slide summarizes how people responded about their interactions with town staff. So up in the upper left, there's a breakdown of why people contacted the town in the last few years. And then below that is which department they contacted. And then on the right is their overall impression of staff. And that was very favorable in terms of excellent and good responses. Going further, we looked at how well each department is performing and the community's impressions. This is the breakdown of the police department and their responses to that. Some of the things we asked the community, how quickly do they respond? Caring about the well-being of the people they deal with, making the community feel safe, preventing crime, working with neighbors to solve neighborhood problems, effectively solving problems in traffic enforcement. So traffic enforcement ends up at the bottom. It's a very difficult problem to solve. We do have a lot of traffic. Obviously, the board has talked a lot about red light running in the last few months. So there's probably some work to do there. But as you can see, that's the one that sort of gets, hits the bottom. We asked people what their impression of safety problems is in the town. Traffic speeding, again, at the very top. Drugs was right behind that. I think that's not just a town issue. Stop sign and red light violations just below that. And then you have theft, property crimes, youth crime and violent crimes, so. Fire department, very similar to what we asked about the police department. And so you can see the responses there, overall very favorable. Ocean rescue, I think overall, people feel like the service is good. I think internally, we feel like the service is very good. Again, we don't know exactly how people are responding to this or what kind of information they have when they respond. I think natural reaction is to want more service in this area. So you can see that. Sanitation services, trash service, community cleanliness were both rated well. Recycling slightly less. Bulk waste services, I think people really liked the service there. One of the things we've been wondering is, you know, we provide service where we pick up, you know, pretty much seven months out of the year. And, you know, this is done on a monthly rotation throughout the town. There's no limit on the service and, you know, you don't have to call. And so one of the questions that we wondered is, you know, do things sit out too long? You know, is it creating a community cleanliness issue? We've made some internal adjustments in the last few years in that area. And overall, it seems like people prefer having a higher level of service in this area versus pulling it back and worrying more about the community cleanliness. So some of the communities, our neighbors, offer service twice a year and you can only put it out during those times. We aren't like that. And so this is just another area where I think it confirms what we're doing. This is how people rated the planning department. We were asked about treating customers with respect, treating customers equitably, the level of responsiveness and timeliness. And so that's, that's how the responses shook out. We asked several questions about housing affordability, which ended up probably being the area of most concern overall in the survey. And obviously, that's receiving a lot of attention in the media and throughout the county in the last few years. And it's become a critical issue and everyone, you know, obviously confirmed that with their responses here. Just below, the second question near the bottom, we talked about housing density. One of the things we asked is, would people be willing to accept increases in our zoning density for housing in exchange for creating more opportunities for affordable housing? And so you can see the responses there. That's probably a good one to go into the report and really study how people analyze that. Although I think people are very interested in achieving affordable housing in Nags Head, it doesn't appear that they're willing to sacrifice many exchanges in density for that, achieving that goal. And then this question asked about development types, you know, what's most appropriate for Nags Head? And I think this really reflects how we're built out currently, with the majority of the town being a single-family. of the town being, uh, single-family dwellings and then small-scale commercial buildings and mixed uses. You see cottage courts and motels, but then once you get down further in, in multifamily, commercial strip shopping centers and hotels, uh, people feel like those areas are, are less appropriate, or those types are less appropriate for Nagshead than what you see at the top, which really confirms where we've been heading for years now. We asked about height limits. Overall, our height limit is forty-two feet. For years, it's been thirty-five feet for single family, single-family dwellings and most other structures. And then, uh, in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, we allowed the height to go up to forty-two feet, just in exchange for, for having a greater roof pitch. Uh, the majority of respondents felt like th-, those regulations were about right. Uh, we also created a hotel overlay district south of the village at Nagshead years ago with a height limit of sixty feet, and it appears that, uh, most people think that's probably too high. And so, um, the question below in Figure Thirty-five at the bottom, you know, how strongly do you believe that, that height regulations are important in preserving the character of Nagshead? You can see overwhelmingly, people think that height's probably the number-one criteria for maintaining Nagshead as it is. This is really related to planning and code enforcement, this question. We asked people what they thought the main problems were with respect to this. Over occupancy of vacation rentals really, really rose to the top. Um, and so, we see that theme throughout the survey, and that's probably something that we'll talk about, uh, with the board in our retreat. Obviously, Kelly mentioned earlier, the Septic Health Committee has been talking about that issue as well. Again, that's a really prob-, really tough problem to tackle, um, but it is something that I think people are starting to become more sensitive to. Uh, just below that, residential light spillover and glare onto adjacent properties. You know, as we build out, I think this becomes more and more of an issue. We don't really regulate this item, so that could be something that we want to talk about in the future. Uh, septic failures was something that people are very concerned about. And then, as you can see the rest of the list there, uh, duplex, illegal duplexes in apartments, trash, commercial, commercial property maintenance, and then less concerned about residential property maintenance or abandoned properties, signs, vegetation, abandoned vehicles. This was kind of surprising to me, the responses to this question, that most of the respondents weren't familiar with the Septic Health Program. I think in the last year or more, really since Connor's been involved, uh, I think there's a renewed focus on getting this information out there, but I think that highlights the, the need to really focus on continuing our efforts to get the community familiar with, with this program and being creative in terms of how we get the information out. And I know that that direction is now being established. This question asked about soundside conservation. You know, we've been working on an estuarine shoreline management plan. Uh, we've been focusing on the oceanfront shoreline for years and, uh, asked questions about how, how concerned people are with the estuarine shoreline. It does seem to be an area of concern, and it's something we're focused on now with the estuarine shoreline management plan and seeking grants to, to implement that plan. Overall, people felt like the ocean water quality was good or, or excellent, uh, and then sound, not so much. Traffic and transportation, uh, this was a theme that emerged during the survey. Congestion, overcrowding, traffic, there are themes that are, that are continuing to emerge, and so we have a whole series of issues, uh, to work on here. And this will probably be a theme for the board at, at the upcoming retreat. Uh, a lot of these things are controlled by DOT, and so a lot of what we would do here would be working with DOT, so we can talk about that later. Uh, but people felt fairly strongly that, uh, traffic congestion was something we need to focus on. And then we have where, where people are getting their information. I think at the top, you really see some, some of the more traditional sources is where most people are getting their information. Uh, social media is in there, but Nagshead website actually rose to the top. And then preferred channel of communication, email, was really the number-one item. So, I mentioned earlier, the verbatim responses. Uh, in the appendices, we have all the verbatim responses listed to the open-ended question, what is the single most important change or improvement to suggest to the town in Nagshead? As I said earlier, affordable housing is the number-one item. Uh, then we've got beach nourishment enhancement and access, traffic flow and safety, recreation and preserving green space, and then limiting, controlling development and maintaining the Nagshead character. Uh, those are the things that really rose to the top. Obviously sidewalks, bike lanes and trails, that's been a big focus of the town in the last few years, uh, but, but those are really the issues. Should be no surprise there. And it's just a, a graph showing that same, uh, set of information in terms of how much people thought these were the single most important issues. So what's next? Uh, as I mentioned, the board is going to be holding a strategic planning retreat, uh, in the next month. Uh, this survey is going to be, uh, discussed at the retreat in terms of how, how we attack the responses that we received. Uh, from there, we intend to develop a stra-, strategic plan, uh, which we've been doing for the last few years, but this one will be focused more on what we heard during the survey and a little bit more comprehensive, hopefully. So then, that, that information will flow into our budget and CIP documents in the spring. And then obviously, as I said, this survey will be a resource in future years where we can evaluate policy, program and budget considerations. And then hopefully, it's something that we continue to do at regular interview, intervals and not wait eighteen years to do. But, um, I, I think overall, we were pleased with the process and the results and the report. We felt like the, the outcome and the deliverable was professional, and so, uh, we are going to go ahead and post this information for the community to read, and we're happy to answer any questions about this.
No questions.
A lot of information. The, uh, verbatim comments are pretty entertaining.
It's a lot.
And informative, and informative, but also entertaining.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and hopefully this is a useful tool for you in the future.
Okay, very good. It will be, I'm sure. And thank you, staff, everybody who contributed to the design of that and promoting it and making sure we got the best results we could, um, for that. David Ryan for discussion of Nagshead Place Drainage Restoration Project.
Good morning again. Bring this memo up. Yes, included in your board packet is a memo that outlines some requests that we have recently received related to the old Nagshead Place subdivision drainage restoration project. Now, the board recently considered this project, the, the bid awarded this project to EnviroTech Construction Unlimited Services here recently, and, uh, they have begun construction out there within the project limits. Um, the, to, to go back a little bit, um, we've been working on this project for about three-plus years. This was something that was initiated by the, uh, Property Owners Association over an old Nagshead place to go ahead and do a comprehensive review of the drainage within their neighborhood to see what, if any, improvements could be made to address the frequency of flooding and the duration of flooding within the neighborhood. I know that there is primarily a focus at the very south end of Linda Lane in the cul-de-sac, which historically has been a flood-prone area. But in, in discussions with the board, um, you know, the charge was to go ahead and look at this as a neighborhood-wide project rather than just solely focus on, on one area. And so, we had, uh, worked with this, uh, done a design, put it out to bid last year. We did not have adequate funding. We sought, uh, grant assistance, which we were able to secure, a Golden Leaf Grant, to be able to have adequate funding to go ahead and move this project forward towards construction. So, um, just wanted to do a quick review of the improvements associated with this project. Uh, up on the screen is an aerial overview of the project. Up here towards the top of the screen, that is Bainbridge Street, and then we have, going from top to bottom of the page, this is South Memorial Avenue, which goes all the way down to Hollowell Street. Here towards the middle of, of the page is Curlew Street, and then we have, over on the left-hand side of the page, Linda Lane. So, I'll try to zoom in a little bit so you can see some of this lime work. So, what we have attempted to do is to restore this project back to its original condition. When this subdivision was constructed back in and around two thousand, it was comprised, comprised of roadway swales on either side of the roadway network, and there was some pipes, uh, that were installed for conveyance to the upstream end of the Curlew, Curlew Street Ocean Outfall, which is shown here on the right-hand side of the page. What we have is, blue is some underground piping, um, which is a continuation of the South Memorial Avenue Drainage Trunk Line that runs from north to south and then, uh, makes a ninety-degree turn at Curlew Street and goes to the Ocean Outfall, um, there at that point. Uh, what we've highlighted in red are some additional pipe improvements that, uh, we have proposed with this project, um, at certain areas to be able to provide better distribution of stormwater water flow throughout the neighborhood. What we had found out during the assessment was, there was only a single path for a stormwater to take, and if that path was obstructed, then water would start to back up. And so, part of what we tried to accomplish is to develop multiple pathways for water to flow, so if one was obstructed, there was still another path for water to take. Going down towards the bottom of the page... Give me a second here. One of the areas of focus was the southern end of Linda Lane. Like I had stated previously, has historically been flood-prone. Part of that is due to elevation, there's a lower elevation there. The other part is just the amount of impervious surfaces within that area. This, uh, this cul-de-sac right here is very large in nature, and so if we're able to go ahead and reduce runoff and be able to collect runoff at the same time, that will provide a significant benefit for this, this portion. Also, as we talked about distribution of stormwater, going ahead and putting in some connecting pipes, which would then allow for conveyance, um, down from Linda Lane to Curlew Street out through the Ocean Outfall. So, in, in total, what we are trying to do is provide a better distributed network, restore back to its original condition, and make enhancements in those critical areas that, uh, we have seen flooding in the past. Now, we have recently received some requests from some of the homeowners, um, to go ahead, post-project, to be able to go ahead and pipe in portions of the swell, um, once it's completed. Uh, the reasoning for that was to go ahead and maintain the parking that they are currently using out on the street, um, to serve as overflow for some of those rental units. This has, uh, become an, an issue in some of the, the neighborhoods, that there has been more of a reliance on the street, um, for overflow parking, which has impeded some of our infrastructure, and that is really what, um, we have seen in here, is that there have been improvements out in the right-of-way to include landscape stones and, and landscaping and grading, which impedes the flow of water. So what we are trying to accomplish here is to restore that so we can have conveyance, we can have water quality treatment through the vegetative swell network prior to that being discharged through the Ocean Outfall. Uh, we've tried to find a balance of that through, um, throughout the project, noting what the town's stormwater goals are, noting what the state's stormwater goals are, and try to align, um, those goals with this project, uh, with this project design. With that comes constraints. Um, we, we only have a limited amount of space to be able to make these improvements. South Memorial Avenue is a fifty-foot wide right-of-way, um, and Curlew Street and Linda Lane are sixty-foot wide right-of-way. So, the Linda Lane and Curlew Street, you have a little bit more area. Uh, South Memorial Avenue, a little bit more constrained. We have about eleven, twelve feet on either side of the street to be able to make these improvements, so we're somewhat constrained by that. Um, we also know, in this area, we have high groundwater elevations, so we want to make sure that we don't go too deep with our improvements. And then also, uh, with, in trying to go ahead and keep this system shallow, we also have considerations for cover depth over any pipes that we're putting in the system. Typically, for a, uh, for a high-density polyethylene, uh, plastic pipe, we have about twelve inches of cover depth that we typically try to maintain over that pipe to make sure that it's, uh, rated for vehicle traffic. So, uh, that is kind of a, an outline of, of the, um, of the overall project, um, the requests that have been presented to us, and I just wanted to bring back the, uh, memo because I wanted to go ahead and cite what we currently have within the ordinance that speaks to improvements in the right-of-way. So, in section eleven point twelve of our Unified Development Ordinance, it talks about drainage within the right-of-way. Uh, bullet item number one talks about maintaining an unobstructed flow path. Bullet point number two talks about, uh, the prohibition of temporary structures or other types of encroachments or improvements that could obstruct that flow path. Uh, and then it talks about the homeowner's maintenance and, uh, the responsibility for a maintenance, um, of their driveway, of the swell section when grassed, as well as, uh, the driveway culvert pipe, if, if one exists. And then, uh, eleven point twelve point four speaks to the point that if homeowners want to go ahead and make improvements in the right-of-way, what that procedure looks like. And so, this request comes before you because we, um, based upon experience, we anticipate that we will receive multiple requests from homeowners to go ahead and pipe in their sections of ditches, or, uh, excuse me, of swales. And so we want to get a, get in front of that and have this discussion to the, with the board to see, um, where you stand as far as, do we allow them to pipe this in or do we not? And, uh, with that, um, I will, um, I would like to ask the board for any feedback that you may have, um, with these requests and how we should go ahead and proceed with managing them.
I'll start down here. Mr. Seers.
David, I think, um, as much as you don't want that responsibility, I think the responsibility's going to come back to you by case by case, because you can't pipe in a situation that the water's not going to continue as it's flow. So, I don't know how you want us to... I don't know any of the elevations. We don't know how it's, I mean, I understand what you presented to us, but what's your opinion? Should they be able to pipe it? Should they not? Will it flow? Will it not? Are we solving a problem or are we not? I mean, ultimately, what we're trying to do is resolve some stormwater issues.
We, we, we are, and we're always trying to find that balance. And we have tried to minimize or mitigate the amount of piping, uh, again, to address water quality concerns, and only place it where it's absolutely needed. And, you know, one of the things that we look at in the design is if we start to pipe in these sections of ditches, what does that look like? How does that affect our flow? And I'll, I'll go ahead and, and present this up here on the screen. These, these are just some really rough sketches, and, uh, these are some of the design considerations that we have. So, up here, um, in the top-left, we have an open swell section that's about two feet deep with three-to-one side slope. This really represents, like, the worst-case scenario that we currently have in our design. The flow through that section is about one-point-three-two cubic feet per second, and that's the measurement of flow that we have when we look at, um, design for stormwater facilities. Up here on the right, an equivalent to that for a pipe section is a twelve-inch diameter pipe, and that's about one-point-two-two cubic feet per second. Now, the area for the swell is definitely greater, has greater holding capacity, but typically, that's going to be grassed, and that's going to have more retardance towards flow. flow. Whereas a pipe, especially a smoothwall pipe, will have a smoother flow line, enabling flow to move quicker downstream. So, if, if we were to look at some alternatives for piping, again, if we go back to what our goals are, and our goals are to look at how can we passively treat these systems, here at the bottom, we have a, a pipe slash swell solution, which is kind of a hybrid, where you could have a perforated pipe, and then you could still have a shallow swell above it. And this would still allow for infiltration, and it would allow for flow downstream. But with that solution, you're looking at about 40% of the capacity or the flow for this type of solution as compared to the open swell. And so, that is, that is a pretty significant difference. So, to really answer your question, there's probably only a couple areas where piping makes sense, and that's where the swell gets really deep, and that is going to be primarily around the Curlew Street intersection. That's where all flow is being directed. We do have some limited piping there. There may be some opportunities to the south of there, but yes, it would come down to a case-by-case basis, but would that be seen as being fair and equal to everybody else in the subdivision? Probably not.
The HOA came to us to solve an HOA problem, not an individual's problem.
That's, that's, that's correct. And we have been corresponding with the HOA pre-project and also during project, trying to keep them updated on the progress and noting these issues, and going back and saying, okay, this is where we started from, this is what the problem is, and we're trying to avoid having that problem happen again. Because we have seen this happen throughout town. We did a project recently on South Memorial Avenue where there was an open ditch section, and property owners were allowed to go ahead and pipe along the frontage of their lots. We saw that back in 2019, I think it was several days after Hurricane Dorian, we had some flooding in that area, and that was a result of one of those pipes getting clogged. Once we relieved that clogging, that seemed to relieve the problem. But the source of that problem was, there was a 12-inch diameter pipe in there connecting up to a 24-inch diameter pipe, and there is all types of issues with workmanship and how those pipes were being installed. So, we want to make sure that we don't have that similar situation happen again. And so, if we start looking at this, we want to do that in a managed approach where we're able to have some oversight as to how these pipes are installed.
Thank you, Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you, David. Reading through all the information, I'm not a fan of piping. I think it degradates your water quality further downstream, and we sit there in our last survey talked about water quality, and I think we need to preserve that. But I also don't think the parking for the rental cottages encouraging more cars should be allowed either. The homeowners need to limit the number of cars that they're having come, and it's real simple how you do it. Put it in your contracts. Every contract that I've ever had had limits on the number of cars. We have a big traffic problem out here. Encouraging more cars by having extra parking is not the way to solve that. So, both from the water quality standpoint and the maintenance, I'm concerned about long-term maintenance, too. It's very expensive for the town unless we have all these agreements in place that runs with the property, not with the homeowner. I could see that that is going to be a nightmare for staff to have to deal with, and I'm, I prefer swales, and we're talking about a 40% less capacity by having that. That defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do, which is improve drainage, not slow it down. So, I'm just in favor of, mayor of the swales and enforcing the rules that we have, that you can't fill it in with rocks and all these other things, and homeowners piping there on their own. Let's just do our jobs and make it work.
Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
Thank you for your presentation, and I got to agree with Commissioner Cahoon, I'm not a fan of the piping. Water quality is number one. There's a problem out there, we're going in to handle the problem. Let's do everything we can with the tools that we have to solve the problem, and I think we may be limiting ourselves by using piping. But you put in the swales, then we've got the concern of people still trying to park there and degrading the swales over, over time. So, it's going to have to be something that, parking's going to have to be regulated there. But again, we've been asked to help solve a problem, let's solve it the best means possible and make sure that what we do has an impact with the problems that they're seeing. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I am also concerned about the maintenance of the pipes and just the cost down the road and how the town's going to have to deal with all that, so I kind of agree with the other two commissioners on the swales.
Well, I'm going to weigh in on the same side. I think the, I think the math, you know, we were, we were asked to solve a problem. We've been through a lot of effort to do that, the staff's been through a lot of effort, grant applications, all engineering work, all kinds of things. You know, and to take two steps forward and then a 40% plus step backwards, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And then to absorb the long-term maintenance of that, I just, I don't see it. I mean, all of these houses were permitted, they complied with the parking ordinance that we have for the houses when they were built, so theoretically, they should have enough parking. We understand what the circumstance is and why they don't, but I am certainly not inclined, when we're trying to solve a technical problem of drainage, to then take the step back because of over-occupancy and too many vehicles. So, if you need a, if you need a motion, but I think you can certainly see which way the wind's blowing on this.
Yes, I think I've got the guidance that it always requests.
Very good. All right, thank you, David.
All right, appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
That then brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. I'll start, oh, yes, Andy.
There was one more thing I wanted to bring out, or at least go through with the board, real quick. As, you know, as we've been meeting, several of you have asked me about a specific issue, the Bladen Street Beach Access, which is the wreck of the Huron.
Okay.
So, I think several members of the community have reached out to board members about that beach access, because that is the location of the wreck of the Huron, and obviously, the wreck is offshore, and there's a buoy out there that we have some responsibility to help maintain, and then at the beach access itself, there's the gazebo where we have some educational panels about the wreck. And so, we are working on a project to sort of reinstate and revitalize some of the improvements there, and so, several of the board members asked me to sort of give an update on what's going on. So, obviously, we've met out there with public services, and we've, working on a project to clean up the access, repair the gazebo, and replace a lot of the decking and railings on the gazebo, and improve the signage, removing unwanted vegetation, and then consolidating a lot of the signs at the beach access. So, just bringing that whole gazebo into more of a repaired state that meets our standards. And Roberta's been working on a lot of the updating of the panel information, and this has taken some time, but there is a lot that's going on behind the scenes to update the panels. There's some new information that we've learned about the wreck itself, and so, she's trying to gather information from experts that are familiar with the situation. She's been talking to Dr. Nathan Richards, who's the Director of Maritime Studies at ECU. He's reviewing the panels. She's talked to Dr. Anna Gibson-Holloway. She's with the Fleet History Team. She's the lead in the Histories and Archives Division at the Naval History and Heritage Command. She's currently reviewing the panels. She's the source of information about the five men from the salvage company who died trying to get the Huron after it grounded, and overall expert in the sinking of the ship. And we're also working on securing the rights to images, and we would like to add to the panels, a local, that we would like to add to the panels, and we have a local design firm who's helping to redesign all the panels with the latest information. And so, we've got that well underway, and we're hoping to make some progress getting those panels in place within the next couple of months, but we just wanted to let the board know that it's a project we're working on, and it's in progress. Happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate the update. I'm sure those members of the public that are asking about it will appreciate, too. It's interesting to hear all the new things that you're possibly going to be adding. Great job by staff. Thank you, Roberta, very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. I'll start with Commissioner Sanders. Anything to bring this morning?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Just one thing I failed to note during the committee report, that the Fire Staffing Committee did meet last week for about, just over two hours, productive meeting, and we are meeting again next Wednesday, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your service on that. Appreciate that. Commissioner Cahoon.
Couple things. I haven't seen any progress out of DOT as it relates to the stoplights at all. I know it's been a few months, but it appears that whoever their contractor is or the mother, the complaints I'm getting are still just abysmal service out of the DOT stoplights. I know they're starting to work on the road again, but if the contractor that worked on the section on the south end does the same sort of looping that they did on the north end, it's going to be not solved at all, so.
Yeah, I know the town manager is trying to pursue the progress on that, and it's, we're not getting good answers.
I appreciate what you and the manager are doing. I just think it's, I don't know where it's falling into the pit, but it's fallen into the pit somewhere with their contractors. But thank you. Only other thing, I'm happy to report that there's a new postmistress up at the post office. The interim is gone. The customer service that went away is now back.
Very good.
Which is very nice to see. It was pretty bad up there with an interim that was sleeping in the office and all that kind of stuff, but thank goodness we have a postmistress who hopefully will follow in the long line of the good postmasters and postmistresses that we have had in the Town and Nagshead. So, anybody that has not been getting good customer service, go back and try it again. Hopefully, you'll find a different outcome.
Very good.
And lastly, thank you. This is my last meeting.
Yes.
Thank you to the boards that I've worked with, to the citizens that have elected me, and to the wonderful staff over, I'm bad as I say this, 27 years with the Town and Nagshead. Nancy, I've got you beat by two. I've had great staff, great managers, thank you very much for all the help that you've given me over the years, because none of us sitting behind this table could do it without the staff that we've all had. So, I thank everybody for the privilege that I've enjoyed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your service. I'll say more in a moment.
I want to say thanks to David for overseeing the project at Public Works or Town Services, whichever way we're referring to it now, and the patience that everybody out there's having with that. And then I was going to mention that this was the last day, and I've been honored to sit here for six years beside you and see the dedication to the Town and Nagshead that you've had over your lifetime, for the most part, and just like you're, you're going out today, and here you are telling the public about the new postal person. I mean, it's never-ending, and whoever sits in this chair or the empty chair has got shoes that are unfillable. So, I appreciate the honor of being able to sit here. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And that brings us to the, to the mayor's agenda, and I do want to say, if you've, you've just learned, if you've been watching today and you saw the decorations and the lights at Commissioner Cahoon's seat, and Commissioner Sears has started this, before we recess, we do need to acknowledge that this is Renee Cahoon's last meeting. As a Nagshead Commissioner, she will attend a retreat, but she's asked to be excused from the December meeting. She will return to our January meeting to be properly and publicly celebrated, but it is appropriate to acknowledge the end of her service today. Renee began serving Nagshead in 1991 when she was elected mayor. She took a break from the town in 2000 to serve as a county commissioner, and then served again as mayor from 2005 into 2009. In 2010, she was appointed to this board to fulfill an unexpired term, continuing to the present. And all she has served her town for, I had, 32 years. And this is in addition to her service on the Coastal Resources Commission and other bodies. Much more will be acknowledged in January, but I want to offer one observation today. In all her years of service, Renee has followed one guiding principle: Is this good for Nagshead? Is it good for our environment? And is it good for North Carolina? It is my hope that collectively, this and future boards will manage to find and follow that same star. Thank you, Renee, and Godspeed.
Thank you very much. To all of you, thank you.
Yes. Anyone else would like to say anything?
I didn't realize we were doing the acknowledgements today, so I failed to mention it, but I had the pleasure of being one of the employees. I started in 90, she started in 91, and then when I became police chief, I worked more closely with the board during the budget process. And then when I was elected almost four years ago, to be able to work alongside her, knowing that that's kind of the commissioner I wanted to be, the Nagshead's best interest at all times, and it's been, it's been a pleasure, and I wish you well in having some extra free time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, it has been a great honor, and the knowledge and the guidance that you bring to this board is invaluable and will be missed, so I wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great trip.
Well, we will see you at the retreat, and then we will see you in January. And I invite the public, we do intend that to be quite a celebration, and we hope that members of the public will attend that meeting. We have no closed, we have no other closed sessions that are required. Is there other business to come before the board? Hearing none, then a motion to recess to the board retreat on November the 16th at 9:00 AM at 2521 South Virginia Trail, Virginia Dare Trail would be in order.
So moved.
There we go. That's awesome. Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you very much.